...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it is April 28th in the Iowa Republic.
Here.
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 Fire?
Here.
Pearl?
Here.
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 The April 14th minutes, is there a motion or any changes? Anybody like to make a motion to approve that, April 14th?
So.
Second.
There's a motion made, I think Brian Beattie is the second. Roehlis.
Clearing.
Here. Oh, yes.
Here.
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
We're off. Questionnaire.
Hurry, we have a copy of the questionnaire report. Total tax income received since the last meeting, $208,341,69, and those are a lot of double payments, because we don't have the last kind of had a questionnaire provided to the board. The Beechers, Beech Alliance Club is requesting permission to hold its annual candy bay in Beecher on May 3rd. A copy of their request is attached. Are there any objections to that request?
No.
And our rule.
Yes, they have no plans to do any, on any roadways in the village at all, just for front businesses. And also, Illinois is requesting approval of proclamation declaring the month of May as motorcycle awareness code in both Beecher, this is a similar fact they ask for every year. Are any objections to that request? And that's all that I have.
Should the proclamation be made?
Absolutely not.
Should the proclamation be made?
No, we don't think so.
For recognition of audience, we have Mike Hansen, the Amity Busman for the property management committee, and expressly here that we should address the board.
Very good, thank you, Mrs. President, members of the Village Board. My name is Michael Hansen, I'm an attorney in Joliet, and I've been appointed as the Amity Busman for the Iliana. I was appointed by the Will County Board through the office of the Will County State's Attorney. I am an independent person, I don't have to answer to anybody. My purpose, my duties and responsibilities are to assist property owners and any citizen in this area where the Iliana is supposed to be located with any questions, concerns, issues concerning the acquisition of property, and I'm not supposed, my role is not to act as their lawyer. I don't get paid by them, I get compensated through the Will County, it's a grant provided by the state of Illinois, and so I get compensated for my time, but it's to assist people whose property may be acquired with questions, and maybe appraisal questions, and maybe going on property questions. The status of the Iliana at this point in time is that the record of decision is due to be entered sometime toward the end of May. That's what IDOT is expecting, and that's the decision which would give the right for the Iliana to proceed. IDOT right now is working on, what they've done so far is they've got all the property, the subject properties in the corridor, they have them, they've done the environmental work on the property, they've done the survey work on the property, they are starting to commence the appraisal work, and the intent is to, if the record decision is positive at the end of May, then they will be, for the next year, sending out appraisers to, there's about 250, 300 parcels that are in the footprint of being acquired. Then they will go out and conduct onsite appraisal work, so then they can make offers of acquisition to the property owners sometime over the course of the whole year. The roadway itself is due to be, the construction would be theoretically started sometime in 2016, with a due date of completion at the end of 2018, so it would take at least three full years to construct. But this is a role that I understand was started, you may be familiar with this type of role being in this area because it's been used with the third airport, and I'm just kind of new to this role, if you will. And I have office hours here, right in Washington Township Hall on the 4th Tuesday. Every month, I've been here twice, from 3:00 in the afternoon to 6:00. I have an office in Joliet, I have a website. Many people have called me on the phone, sent me emails, just asking answers to certain questions, and I have a direct pipeline to IDOT where I can, I hope that I'm responsive and can do the best I can by answering their questions and getting back to them. And I wanted to come here tonight, I was invited by Mr. Barber, I appreciate the invitation to let you know who I am, and if you have any questions, or if you have anything that would come up during the course of this process, please feel free to call me and try and get my name out, because obviously Beecher being one of the main areas is going to be affected by this roadway, so I can, you know, offer any help and assistance to property owners and people in the area, so that's why I'm here tonight. And welcome to answer any questions.
Do you have a direct phone number or an extension?
Do I have a direct phone number?
Yeah.
Yeah, my office phone number is Joliet, that's where you get ahold of me, I'll meet you with some cards, is 815-744-9500. And generally, every day, I just set aside a time at 11:00 every day, myself and my system, get together and go through whatever I may have received in the way of correspondence, or have any phone calls, so I can try and do something every day to keep on top of this.
Do you have an extension of the township office?
Oh, no, I'm just here, so I let the township, they've been extremely helpful and cooperative, they just let them know what's on the schedule, that I'm coming, and certainly I like to get out and try to get a little more publicity. I would think, I think as everybody knows, there's been two major public meetings. One was, let's see, this is April, one was a couple of months ago in Wilmington, there was another last year. There are not any plans right now to have any other major public meeting. I'm trying to have, I had a meeting in Piattone about six or seven weeks ago at the American Legion Hall. I'm trying to set up another one in Wilmington, hopefully within the next month, just to have anybody in the area to come, and if you have questions, comments, or whatever, so that's the purpose of my duties and responsibilities.
I have two questions.
Go ahead.
You did such a great job, you already answered.
Okay, alright.
And when the possible build date would be, and then what are not, you haven't, or have any residents ever reached out to you when you answered?
Yes, yeah, and obviously what I'm trying to do is get out some better, more publicity, I've got a game plan for that, so that if anybody here asks questions or something, I, like I said, I hope that I can be, I try my best, at least I've got, I've got what I feel is a good pipeline directing into the IDOT, and they've been very helpful to me. I can only imagine, you know, residents trying to contact them themselves, where do they go, who do they contact, do they return phone calls, but sometimes the answers aren't much what people would like to hear, but at least we're trying to be helpful and responsive to them, so.
And there's any questions?
And one of the big complaints we've heard at these public meetings is contractors for IDOT, surveyors, or engineers, where they were, what on these people's properties did damage, I don't know what kind of damage, rust, I guess, and who do those people call if they have that and they believe that they didn't have permission to go on the property?
Well, they didn't, you know, certainly call me, I could try and help them out, number one. The status of law essentially is this, is I've been told, this is what I've been informed, that, and I don't want to use the word "all", but at least substantially, if not practically, all of the survey work and environmental engineering work has been completed. Okay, that's number one for all the properties. Now, the, IDOT has the ability legally to go on properties, IDOT has established a procedure whereby they, this is what they do, they give these bids, they have a notice, they try to call them, this is what I've been told, and they go on to a property and they put a notice on their door, there's a special card that they've been there, they like to talk to them, but they, by virtue of my statute, they can, appraisers are not supposed to do any damage to their property, of course, you know what I mean, an appraiser by one of them just can't go on the property without, you know, without the property owner giving their consent. It's a little different for appraised, however, okay? And IDOT is not going on people's property to conduct appraisals unless they have the permission, okay? And that may mean your property may be appraised on the roadway, you know what I mean, if that be the case, but that's the status there, so.
Are there also any questions?
Do they have particular stages that this is all going about in, and a particular plan that they're going to be putting out before we know the whole operation?
Meaning what?
The different stages, and if this is ever going to come into eminent domain?
Well, I mean, during the next year, after the record decision, when they start to, and then go out and do the appraisal work, they'll start offers of acquisition, okay, and that can take any type of role, from people agreeing to the offer price, to all going to condemnation, going to a trial in Will County, et cetera, so.
Does it have a particular area that you have, that you, you have a neighborhood that would be the houses affected?
Well, there's a route for the Iliana at the present time, yes.
And is there a website for that?
I couldn't tell you what it is off the top of my head.
Iliana.org.
That's all I have.
And Iliana.com, and?
Iliana.org.
That order.
Okay. And the appraisals are going to be based more on land property, or is it going to be based on the home?
Well, it just depends, it depends on what property they need to acquire. They had all types of factors go into the value of a person's property and other situations, so.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of discontentment with the other operation that they had involved in a certain area. A lot of the homes were appraised based on the land value, not the home value, and there was, there was a lot of discord about that, so this is based on the home values, too?
Well, I don't know exactly their methodology they're using, it's just going to, there's a lot of factors that go into
There is.
the appraisal of someone's property, so.
That's what a lot of people are concerned about, they're trying to figure out that, and trying to get ahold of the appraisers that are running, what's about it?
Do you have any idea how many homes are affected along the corridor? I remember, it's not true, many, unlike the airport one.
Well, there's. Is it homes or property, because the homestead may not be inside the area of the road, they're not going to acquire the home.
Right.
They really only got to acquire the property that they need to put in the, put in the.
And I want to say there was only about 15 homes in the path, over by Wilmington, there's a significant.
There's approximately 50 properties, the property owners will have to be relocated, okay? Right, okay, so there's about close to 300 properties that will be affected in some form or fashion. Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate the opportunity, and Mr. Barber knows he'll be holding me, and I thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Do you have a cause?
Sure.
Is there any else from the audience that we should address the board? With non-finance administration, first be clear.
This is our public hearing for the 2014-2015 fiscal year, so I make a motion opening the public hearing for the budget of the fiscal year 2014-2015.
Second.
Motion on the floor, and there's a second, are there any questions or discussion? Roehlis.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hey, just thought, just for historical factors, this is my diamond budget, this is my diamond budget, which is 25, that's silver, isn't it? This is my 25th budget. I figured it out, it just dawned on me on the way here today, this is my budget. But anyway, this, the whole budget process starts with a five-year financial plan, which we completed in the fall, which looks at the next five years, not just the next year. On that five-year financial plan, which we approved back in December, we begin the budget process. The department heads request, make their requests in January, and I do the final revenue projections at the end of January. Then the first draft of the budget comes out in early February. I sit down with the Village President, and we work on a second draft. And then the finance committee is given that second draft in mid-Febuary. The first Saturday in March, then, the finance committee sits down with the administrator, the Village President, and all the departments, and we have what we call our marathon workshop session on the budget, where we analyze the line item. We've been using this process now for several years, I believe since Brian became Chair of Finance, so we could reduce the amount of time spent at the Board Workshop on a reliable item with the budget. And the finance committee can say, here is a budget, we'll go page by page, not line by line, at the Village Board level, to see if anybody has any questions or concerns. And that is our budget workshop, which we had, I believe it was the last Monday in March, we had our budget workshop. After that, the fourth draft of the budget then goes to public hearing, it was put on the website, a notice was published, and the budget was available for public inspection as of, I believe, the 23rd. This is the second year of our 0% tax increase, so there is no new revenue for the general fund this year, other than the new fingerprinting fee for concealed carry registrations. The Beecher Police Department is a location where you can apply for a concealed carry permit, get fingerprinted. We have the technology to do that, and the chief has estimated a certain number. So that's really our only new revenue that we'll be receiving this year in the general fund, other than the increases in the video gaming tax that we're anticipating from two other establishments, which are particularly of gaining licenses. The wages for personnel this year were 2.2% increase for all non-union employees. The Teamsters employees agreed to no raise this year, but they're getting their health insurance now through the Teamsters Union as opposed to the Village's health insurance plan, and there's significant savings to the Teamsters employees as a result of that, and also a significant savings to the. So it was a win-win for both sides. The PPO rates for non-union employees dropped 8.3%, again, good news for us, paying the coverage for the employee, good news for them, because they have to pay a portion of their dependent coverage. However, the HMO rates did go up 5% this coming year. I R F pension employer contributions dropped, actually dropped a little bit to 11.56, 11.58, it's 11.56 next year. This year it's 11.58% for all employees, for pension, that's the Village's cost. Non-union employees are scheduled to be hired in the coming year, however, we do have a part-time pro enforcement officer now budgeted for 20 hours a week for the entire year, and Public Works has about 1,000 hours of part-time labor budgeted, in their budget. We're going to buy three new vehicles out of this budget, two new squads for the PB, the general fund, and an F-350 pickup with toolbox to replace Floyd Berger's 2004 utility truck, using $39,000 from our capital equipment sinking fund. Three dump trucks are scheduled to be repainted this year. One of our bigger projects is our Safe Routes to Schools project, which we are going to have flash and solar lighting for the crossings for the junior high, the grade school, and the high school. That project is costing $148,000, excuse me, but $127,000 of that is being funded by a state grant, and the remainder is coming out of our motor field tax funds. Three subdivisions are receiving new street poles and signs this coming year. In fact, some of the new signs in Hunter's Chase just went up Friday, I believe. And we plan on completing Hunter's Chase, Hunter's Chase West, and help me here, Bob, what are the other two that we're doing in the fall? Is it Prairie Park in Nantucket?
Yes.
Or Hunter's Chase East in the fall?
Yes.
So all we'll have left is Prairie Crossings and Prairie Crossing South, I believe. We're going to install, later on tonight, if this budget gets passed, we're going to ask the Board to approve the installation of two new VFDs, a booster station. We hope that this effort will maintain more consistent pressure in the system, and hopefully reduce water main breaks. That project is going to be 17.5. $39,900 is budgeted, but will only be spent in the water department if the column pipe and well redevelops, pitfalls, reducing the efficiency of the well. The Water and Sewer Committee, or Public Works Committee, excuse me, I have to use the same, Public Works Committee, agreed to fund that every year, but not spending money until the column pipe shows the efficiency. We just don't know what is going to happen, it's a matter of when, not if, but until the when occurs, we have plenty of time to do that, so we'll budget for that every year. Also, we're budgeting $17,300 in the water and sewer departments to upgrade the SCADA system, which is the computer system that runs our water sewer system. The Public Works Committee is recommending that every year we turn one-third of the valves in the water system, so we're going to budget $7,000 every year to do that, because you can see the water sewer funds have capital money spent. The gearbox and electrical components and clarifier number two of the sewer plant are scheduled to be replaced with $15,000. And then there's $36,125 budgeted for an update for our land use plan incorporating Iliana Expressway. We have been told now by IDOT and by Will County that that funding will be made available directly to the municipalities, we just don't know when, we have a meeting on May 7th to find out when. We are also tonight going to consider a thermoplastic contract, $25,000 in this budget for thermoplastic striking of streets, all the streets in the village. And we have $20,000 budgeted for crack ceiling later this fall. Our streets really took a beating this winter, and it's going to be definitely need for some crack ceiling. Relocation of the Village Hall after the renovation of 625 Dixie Highway is also in the budget, and $4,500 is budgeted as a licensing incentive program for Public Works and Public Works. The major changes to the finances and the budget for the coming year include water sewer refuse rate increases, costing average resident $22.80 more in the coming year than it did last year. So, from the Village's point of view, it's going to cost you more as a Village resident, $22.80 this year than last year to live in the Village. None of that is based on property tax, all of that is based on water sewer refuse rates. There's ongoing property taxes for '14 coming from the Village. Staff will try to maintain a zero levy also for 2015. And the harsh 2013 winter and the expanded 2013 road resurfacing program, we pushed our next major resurfacing program back to about 2016 or 2017. Overall, these are the major storylines to this year's budget. The bottom line is general fund is balanced, no reserve cash is used in balance general. There is some reserve cash being used at the water sewer funds to fund capital items only. Mr. Chairman, that's the budget.
Any questions to the administrator? I make a motion closing the public hearing for the budget of the fiscal year 2014 and 2015.
Second. One thing before we do, is there any comments or questions from the audience? Motion on the floor, and there is a second, any questions to the motion? Roehlis. Brian, make the motion.
Clearing.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Caprows?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Okay, we now need to approve the overall budget, so I make a motion for resolution number 2014-04. For adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2014 to 2015.
Second.
There's a motion, and there is a second. Any questions or comments? Roehlis.
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Clearing?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is concerning the ordinance of appropriation for the fiscal year 2014-2015. And there's, as I've talked with Bob, there's a little inconsistency of what we have here. Right now, we had originally appropriated $390,000 for securing the building and doing everything inside, which would be broken down as $125,000 for the building, and $265,000 for doing any of the rehabbing of the building. What Bob's indicated is based on what we're hearing right now from a lot of the contractors, is that the overall cost to rehab the building may exceed our expectation of $265,000. So, kind of cleaning up what Bob has in the write-up here, the idea is to allow us in the future to appropriate $120,000 in lieu of anything else that may go on to allow us to complete the project. Do I have that correct, Bob?
Yeah, but you could drop it to the 270 if you want, doesn't matter, because it's going to require a hold of the Board even. I was just trying to avoid having to go through a supplemental appropriation, which we honor your statement.
I'm just trying to clean up, we originally had put on the 390 for the overall project, all-in cost.
What I forgot to do is take off the price of the building, which we already bought from the original appropriation, so you can remove $125 from the 390, which would make it $265.
Correct.
But I believe we budgeted 270 because we save $5 on the closing of the building. You could probably get away with 270, is that correct?
Right.
That's what we have in the account. And I got to reserve some money to pay taxes, if I'm going to get tax money in the coming. So 270 would be the right number.
But based on what you're seeing from the bids coming in?
This Board would still by vote have to amend the budget and approve a contract. All this would do is, we don't have to amend the supplemental if we have to go over the 270.
The only bid, the only bid that we've received is the roofing bid, and that came in with the budget. The other bids weren't due until the May 20th.
When we went with the all-in, everything inclusive.
It went over what we expected.
The first, the first time we went.
The first bid came in, came in high, and it was only one bid, plus the bid that was not to our specs, so we asked that we rejected that bid, and then we started over again. And then by doing that, then we removed the roofing from it, and the heating from it, and the heating is working, so that's not going to be part of it.
And we changed the ceiling.
And we changed them, yeah, we redid the bids.
Yeah, there was some, there was some stuff that was supposed to be alternates.
Correct.
That were included in there, and they weren't identified, so we have no idea what those alternates were that were supposed to be separate, to know what the true bid was, so.
So, any other questions to that for Bob?
Doesn't matter to me, if you want to make it the same as the budget, that's fine, I mean, make that number 270. Or you can leave it at 390, but knowing that we're not going to go over 270, unless this Board says so.
270? Okay. I make a motion for ordinance number.
1210.
For the appropriation for the fiscal year 2014-2015 of $270,000 for the project at 625 Dixie Highway.
Motion for, and there is a second. Everybody clear on the floor, any discussion? Roehlis. Ready for a question?
I had a question. So what was staff's recommendation, was the 390, is that what you felt comfortable?
Mayor?
Bottom line is, is either way it's got to come back before the Board, it's not like we just leave it the way it was proposed, and then if we, if it ends up, if we run out of trouble because of the bids that came in order, in case it be, we have to come back to the Board.
This ordinance was drafted the day after we opened that one bid, and I panicked. Do you want to make it 270? 270.
And that was the motion.
Clearing?
Yes.
Here?
No.
Fire?
Yes.
Caprows?
Yes.
Coleman?
No.
Clearing?
Yes.
I believe it just takes five for the record, I believe, yes.
Okay, the next item is concerning, and Bob has talked about it when he was reviewing our budget, it's concerning the Safe Routes to School, this would be appropriate as a modern fuel tax, it would be the Village's portion of it, so I make a motion for the resolution 2012-11. Correct.
Right.
Correct.
No, resolution 2014-45.
Authorizing the appropriation of MFT funds for the fiscal year 2014-2015, according to the proposed budget.
Motion on the floor, and there is a second.
Second.
There's a second. And questions or discussion? Roehlis.
Clear?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
The other item that was in, believe it or not, the back of your budget packet that Bob gave us some time ago, was the Personnel Manual for Village Employees, was provided to us under separate cover a few weeks ago for us to go through, anybody has any comments?
I will say that all of the changes in that manual we have discussed before, some of it was long before that's gone. This is the formalization of the discussion.
Does this take any consideration, Jan's thing about the licenses?
Yes.
That was one of the things that we had hanging out there, wanted to make sure we had.
All the amendments were made that we've talked about.
Well, that's why we're waiting with this, to make sure all those are done, and I hope now, you don't have to amend this manual for maybe as long as, but you're.
No, we should step up the probability.
Any comments? Make a resolution, a motion for resolution 2014.
2016.
Adopting a revised Personnel Manual for the Village Employees.
Second.
A mo- there's a motion on the floor, and there is a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Clary?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Clary?
Yes.
Uh, the next item is concerning the job description manual. Uh, this also was provided to us a few weeks ago, uh, if anybody has any comments on that. This is the one for the MM two.
Yeah, this is, takes care of all, right, licensing and stuff.
We actually rewrote every job description, uh, in the village, not re-rolled, edited them because it's been since nineteen ninety-eight since we've updated this manual. And, uh, basically, it's very important to have a good job description manual, uh, not only for your hiring practices, but also for the management. You notice there's a lot of language in there regarding how many pounds you can lift and all that. So if you're expected to lift up to twenty-five pounds for your job, and you decide to lift five hundred pounds, that becomes an issue. So that's why you have to have a job description.
Any comments? Okay, I make a motion for resolution.
Twenty-fourteen zero seven.
Uh, for the revised, uh, job description manual for the village.
Second.
A motion, and there is a second. Questions or discussion? Roll call.
Will?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Earl? Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clary? Yes. And the last thing on your finance has to do with, uh, the village tax rate for the, uh, for two thousand thirteen collectible and two thousand fourteen. Now, is that, is that fourteen or fifteen?
No, this is the, uh, actual tax rate that's coming out in fourteen. The tax bill's coming out in the first.
Uh, the, the big picture here is evidently the, the village's assessed value has, has gone down. Um, therefore, the tax rate, uh, would go from point six four five nine to point seven zero one two to cover that loss of seven point nine percent of assessed value. We're still below the overall cap that the village can go to by point, uh, one nine. Um, we've not, well, we've received no new taxes since the two thousand twelve year, since we froze our levy at six, six hundred and five thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Uh, Bob's provided us a table and comparison chart, and our path to finish, anybody has any comments or questions?
What we wanted to explain to the residents who are gonna be opening their tax bills here in about a week and a half, is we did not raise our levy. It does not mean that your tax bill may, it does not mean the tax bill will not go up. It means that if, if other property has been assessed lower than you, and your assessment didn't change, you're making up for the difference. And that could be the case here. So we can't, you know, misrepresent the people and say, we didn't raise taxes, we didn't, we didn't raise our levy. But they end, may end up paying more in tax because their neighbor might be paying less, it just depends on how that works. Also, we have no control over the other taxing lines, they might. But usually, it's the village that gets in front of the complaints when the tax bills come out.
Any questions, Andrew Clark?
Thank you. Public Buildings and Properties Park and Recreation, trustee one.
Park Row Ordinance, I need to get with Tim on that, we'll be getting more, uh, update on that. Walton Stad Park Prep update, Buddy, do you have anything, or?
I don't, bathrooms are out there, we'll probably be starting a boll gear in the next, uh, week or two.
You got your egg lime, right? The egg lime can, can-
The egg lime's in, yeah, we gotta transfer that over. The only difference is, you know, getting out there so we're not gonna be making ruts through the, uh, you know, the fields.
Right.
So, you gotta let things dry out a little bit.
Okay.
Whether permitting.
Uh, update on the electrical connections, I know the junction box is in at the north field.
That, I, um, just got the, we'll be picking the poles up from, um, Lane Western tomorrow, okay? I'm shooting by the end of the week, have everything on our end completed and installed, and just waiting for ComEd to do their drops. Hopefully, we have some decent weather. I mean, it's supposed to rain again tomorrow, but it, I'm thi- thinking that still if I have three good days, I'll have them off.
Okay, good.
On, on that same issue, Scott, we got a pole in Fireman's Park, the electrical pole that leaned in the high winds today, and ComEd had to come out and put a new pole in, but we don't believe it's the pole that they can make a connection to, is it?
No, no, it's, it's actually the one further south, from where we, where you were at.
Right.
Where we put the electrical box, no, it was the one to the south, it was rotting out, it rotted out at the bottom.
Okay.
So it was hanging over. But I don't believe they did too much damage going out there, Bob, I ga- guided them from the north end, so.
Yeah, it looked like when I was out there, it looked like some of those poles were leaning.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple that were leaning.
There's a couple over there.
Ours are fine.
Okay, we also told, uh, Beechey Rec that if, if need be, if we have everything set up, and ComEd hasn't been out there, they could use a couple portable generators.
Yeah, there's a way that you can do that, yes.
So we'll, we'll get those up and running as soon as we can. Um, update on the grading and adding of limestone to the paths in Lions Park.
Well, that'll, as we, you know, as, as one project is done, that'll be the next one that gets done. That'll be in like a two-day project.
Okay, um, replacement of the roof on the building at six twenty-five Dixie Highway. After a bid letting and solicitation of over sixteen contractors, bids were opened on Monday, April twenty-first, first, and reviewed. Five bids were received and opened, I guess sixteen came to pick them up, five came in, correct?
Well, we saw sixteen roofers in the area.
Okay.
Commercial.
And out of that sixteen, five bids came in and were received and opened, and the lowest bidder was Langoyes Roofing in the amount of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. The budget for the project was thirty-four thousand. Uh, regardless of what we do with the building, we're still gonna need a new roof, and, uh, the roof comes in with a twenty-year warranty. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid from Langoyes Roofing in the amount of thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and five dollars.
Second motion on the floor, and there is a second trustee cleared.
We, we've had experience with this roofer before, they put the roof on the original municipal building, yes.
Discussion or questions? Roll call.
Clary?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Coleman?
No.
Clary?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes. I need that one more. For the rest of our vote.
Okay, um, for the six twenty-five Dixie Highway project, uh, Mike Stunilla reports that many per- prints have been sold this time, this time around. The village should receive several bids. Bids will be open at four P M. on Thursday, May twenty-second, and then considered by the village board at the Wednesday, May twenty-eighth morning. And then we'd already talked about the fact that two hundred and seventy thousand remains in the account for the project. Anything to add to that, Bob?
I'll keep looking at bids. I have a full round right there.
Okay, good. Lot better than only one the, the first time around. Uh, consider a motion approving the plan for the relocation and reconstruction of buildings in Fireman's Park. I think with your bids, everyone received this small rendering. You guys get this colored picture, and then on the second page, there's the actual drawing of the park, uh, showing the location of these, uh, revised buildings. Beechey Rec would like to relocate the concession stand from Fireman's One, you know, where, where it's at right now on the east side of Fireman's Ball Diamond. And, um, to the west of the picnic area by the bathrooms, so it can be centrally located in the park. And one thing about that location too is they'll be able to serve, uh, for the foot traffic over that footbridge going into the school property as well. Uh, the existing beer stand would be torn down, and a larger picnic pavilion would take its place, which could be used year-round by the public. Currently, the building remains locked, as everyone knows, uh, the garage doors are locked, uh, since it is used strictly for storage when there's not an event, uh, through the, uh, Fourth of July. Uh, new two-car garage would be built northeast of the new beer stand, and Beechey Rec and the Fourth of July Commission would have each, they would each have a bay for storage of equipment and materials. This solves the problem as far as the, uh, storage and the, uh, public use and, and so on with that building. Beechey Rec and the Fourth of July Commission have approved this plan after renderings and much discussion. When I say much discussion, um, it has been a long road to get to this plan, uh, as far as the setup for the beer, the storage, the concession stand, and everything else. And it has come that Beechey Rec, Fourth of July Commission have approved the, uh, renderings. Um, the I D N R also approved the plan after being presented, uh, so we did not violate the OSLID grant. Uh, Bob sent a letter down to, uh, Springfield and asked if we could, um, when we remove one building, if we can add another building. And they had no problem with that at all, as far as changing any of that, uh, regarding the OSLID grant. Because that's always been my big thing, to get approval for that, uh, but they had no problem at all. Um, they saw that it would only enhance the park, uh, versus, uh, you know, making it, uh, worse, uh, worse than the original plan it was. So does anybody have any questions about this drawing or additions?
Yes.
The relocation of the, uh-
Concession stand?
Concession stand, is there electrical in that building, Bob?
Electrical in which building?
The concession stand.
The current one?
Yes.
Yes, so you're gonna need to get electrical out to that concession stand.
I think Kenny should-
Bring a new one out there?
There's a, there's places available for him to tap into that.
Because there's electric, you know, going right to that area.
Right, you need to make sure whenever you're feeding that, it's coming on in the existing feed that it's big enough, both the original and this new addition.
I believe they upsized it, Brian, they, we just got through trenching for two new boxes over there, and, well, there used to be, you know, like outlets in the tree that were one, well, either what, the trees are con and are down.
Right.
And they've, they've, uh, upgraded it and, and installed it the proper way, so-
We have a, we have a two-hundred M service for one of those bathrooms right now, that were built at the outside, and we should, we're tapping off that two-hundred M providing service for the concession, which is more than what they have now, I believe right now we only have a hundred M.
That's one question, the other item you indicated was, you're, you're looking to put in a two-car garage?
It's a two-car garage over there, the-
It looks like a two-car garage door, but that thing's a lot bigger than a two-car garage.
It, it has a crazy analogy, they're building a storage building, imagine a two-car garage, slightly bigger here.
Because, I mean, you're, you're looking at a four-car width.
Yeah, you are, but there's two more of them, one for Beechey Rec, one for, for Beechey. And a bigger gap in between for the wall.
Also, the water and sewer are out to that consec-, we can get that out to the concession stand as well over there, because we have the bathrooms right there.
You're just gonna have to get into that concrete, or however you're gonna get, how are you gonna get in the sewer?
Sewer, there's a, the sanitary main runs right through the middle of the park right there.
It goes down Hodges?
Yes, and then it dumps into a, uh, two different manhole structures, and then it goes over to the creek, um, or actually underneath it to the pumping station. And the water main is right there also.
A big discussion on the, uh, beer, beer stand is to be able to use that year-round, you know, uh, with the ice rink down there in the middle of the winter, with the concession stand a little bit closer to that. Um, and, you know, people able to go in there and use it for picnics and whatever they wanna do, I think that's gonna be a big plus for that, for this area.
Are we gonna put doors on the major concession area?
Yeah, we're gonna put garage doors on the, the beer stand.
How can it be the garage rail doors?
Rolling shutters.
There're gonna be rolling, okay.
Rolling shutters.
I get you all that, where they shutter, the rolling garage.
The rolling, the, the rolling steel doors.
Right.
Yeah. The question I have is, are you guys gonna have a fence going between that new outstructure all the way over to the old Dixie location? So there won't be a fence put in between those two areas, now what about going back to the, the old structure? Are you gonna go nor-, are you gonna go west to put that three, that two legs of that fence in?
The new beer stand is located further north than the present beer stand. The, the plan is to have a fence go around the outside of that building, and that fence will be removed after the fourth. It will be removed, fence very similar to what we put by the stage now, except this one only eight feet tall, probably by the building. And it's only gonna be in place for tractors for a cure if they want, and the Fourth of July, whether or not the fence comes out and being stored in a room. So, we want deep fences out of parks, we want the park to be open, you know?
Except for that one that parallels the ditch.
That one stays, yes.
Now, you said it's, it's gonna be wide, larger than the existing beer stand?
This new beer stand is larger than the existing beer stand.
So the old foundation needs to be removed?
Yeah, everything that's shut, the concrete shut, it's, everything is basically shut in that building, so the whole building would have to come out.
Move it only north to keep from, I think, the location.
It's based on, beer stands, the oak tree is same locations, just slightly north, and it's longer and wider. Same exact same location.
That's why, that oak tree that's in the beer garden area is what you're trying to avoid, that's why you want it.
Right, when we move it north, we have to take out two trees, but there are ash trees in them.
But yeah, that oak is in that southeast corner.
And they're, they-
That's an old oak.
It's more a year old oak.
A lot of discussion went into our, our design, I should say, by, by Mr. Bobowski as far as trying to save the trees.
Want to say anything, Ryan?
You have a question.
Can you tell me the year of the foundation when the, under the garden was built?
For, for my time.
They have, that goes back to the sixties, I think.
Before the sixties?
Sixties.
Well, it wasn't known as a beer garden in, in the seventies.
Bingo, it was a bingo.
Seventies, the beer garden was north to south along the parking area, that was the bingo stand that had been there when we were in-
Yeah, sixties. It was always used for bingo, and then, you know, like, uh, what we were talking about as far as the beer stand was right along the parking lot, and that was taken out and destroyed.
That was falling apart.
Hang on.
It's shot already, the concrete's shot from that time?
Yeah, it's a, it's a slab, so those slabs, they-
Big old slab.
Yeah, they crack and heave and, and everything else. So in order to put a new one in, there's no sense in, in keeping the old one from what I understand. Be more work to go around.
They put garage floors in, they didn't put size on it, so it's one concrete slab, only so thick and that's it. So any, any heaving from the frost is gonna start making it bubble and crack, and-
Roots from the trees that are-
Oh, that's the thing, there's so many trees right there.
Surrounding it.
So it's basically the seventies, you said, or the sixties?
Oh, it's sixties.
I think sixties.
Easy sixties.
Yeah.
Oh.
It's got a tin roof, doesn't it?
Fiber glass.
Fiber glass, yeah.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
I think that was, the fiberglass was replaced, the old tin, that was the-
Tin roof.
It was a tin roof with some fiberglass on it, right, with the tin filled?
Yeah.
It was-
It was added, and then they started, they figured that's, add some lights, they started putting-
Skylights.
Skylights in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Fabrical. Um, also, this is gonna be, what, a foot, two feet higher when you walk in?
At least, yes.
So it's gonna be higher, because I don't know if you guys walked in the old one, but it was-
You had a duct to get in there.
Yeah, it was real, it was low, and it was, you know, it was kinda confining, and I think this is gonna be more open.
If you, as far as it being higher, what the, the goal was, was if, when they put the, uh, what do they call it? Again, not the reefer unit, but the, uh-
Trust?
No, the actual unit, it's self-disert beer, what they call it.
Oh, trailer, we call it beer trailer.
Beer trailer, okay, the original idea was they used to put a tent back here, that's why you have that jet out, right? So basically, everything's gotta be tall enough to get that trailer in there, so yes, it is higher than-
The other thing, when you're getting these rolling steel doors, your height is what you want, with a garage door, your height is limited.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, so these shutters are gonna be up, in the up position unless we have to pull them down.
Correct.
You know, because of the wind and the rain and, and everything else, so.
And we didn't want to be able, when, if anybody's using it, do you wanna look up the garage doors, they wanna look at whatever the building is, so.
Okay.
Scott, when are they gonna start from the construction?
This is gonna happen right after the tractors for the cure, I think, is gonna start the, uh, construction, once the major events are over.
We believe that the labor put up this building and volunteered, and materials are all equipped by, we shouldn't have to, have to pay for it. And the largest cost in that, I believe, is gonna be the cement, slabs there.
Scott, you look at also moving concession stand after?
The concession stand is gonna- The concession stand is gonna be, it's gonna be later, I think. It, it all depends.
The, the actual timeline, the only thing we know of, is if we have a successful fourth, we will begin construction then. As far as how we get, what we get, so on and so forth, they haven't worked out those details yet. We had to get past this to make everybody happy before we even come up with what our next step is, as far as what the building, how much it's gonna cost, who's gonna pay for what, who's gonna do what. We had to get past this, and this took us...
Right. So, we don't have a timeline on, on the concession stand. The concession stand is gonna stay, you know, it's gonna stay there until we get the new one?
Built.
Built, so...
That's why I figured you guys were gonna try to do that in the beginning of summer, before the fourth, and then when the fourth opens, you get rid of the old one.
It's theoretically possible that the new concession stand would be a phase two part of this project, and maybe not be built for a year or two.
Right.
But Beechore Rec is doing some fundraising to raise money for their concession stand, and we won't carry the old one down until that new one is probably up and running, so...
The goal would be to get it all done, but there's still some unanswered questions yet here, whether it's involved, something is involved, so...
And we wanna get the style and the look of it and everything, and it's all gotta blend in, you know? So, we're looking for, I'd like to make a motion approving the plan for the relocation, reconstruction of buildings in front of this park.
Second.
If there's a motion, there is a second. Any questions or discussion?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Yes.
Scott, any more?
That's it. That is my report.
Planning, building, zoning, first here.
The building department, nothing forward, it's supposed to be on the news. Committee met to discuss the fence ordinance and architectural codes. The committee discussed changes to the fence ordinance, and although it agrees, the village needs to change a solid fence with a, with a cool concept, there was a difference of opinion on how to replace the current ordinance. Committee also discussed the need for a, for an architectural code. The proposal was received from TSCO to assist with this project, but the fee was considered too high and was not budgeted. A scale-down proposal was requested, and would only cover commercial properties along Dixie Highway. TSCO would review all building permits in the commercial district along Dixie Highway for compliance to codes, and then make a recommendation to the committee, who would make final decision. Planning and zoning committee meeting for April was canceled. The next meeting is scheduled for May 22nd, and we're waiting on agenda.
I don't know if we'll have one yet for the meeting. I know we don't have a secretary, so I might end up taking the minutes of that meeting with you, because both Donna and Drew, Donna and Karen, they're the...
Most have to wait.
I love taking this.
And it's my report.
Thank you. Johnny, should I give you a card? Yeah. Public safety for people.
Yeah, please, Department of Public Safety report is included. Code enforcement, Department of Public Safety report for March is also included for you. Consider a motion authorizing the chief of police to place orders to squad cars of an amount to exceed $50,000. This would allow for the new cars to be street-ready and towed for the Fourth of July. I'd like to make a motion authorizing the chief of police to order two, two new cars and the amount to exceed $50,000.
Second. There's a motion on the floor, and there was a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Mary?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes. Yes.
School district safety and security update to be provided by the chief. Crisis management reviewing is being scheduled for June with all local public safety officials and school district administration. This meeting is hosted, being hosted by the village. Chief, you wanna update us?
Yeah, annually, annually, we do that crisis management review that involves members of the fire district, the police department, the mayor, Bob Barber is in there, along with the principals from all three schools, and the superintendent. Also, as far as the security update, we visited the daycares and all the schools to make sure that they will be compliant with the signs that needs to be posted in reference to the new firearm concealed carry act, and we have provided them with the signs to put in their windows if they needed them. And that's all I have on security.
Thank you, chief. Nixel Engage Participation and Usage Update, chief?
When we, when we take that step up to Nixel Engage, we haven't yet, that'll come in the new budget year, we're still on the regular Nixel. I attended the, the senior breakfast and gave a brief talk about Nixel and the benefits of Nixel. We had an additional 25 people sign up for Nixel after that presentation.
Twenty-six now.
Twenty-six, okay. Currently, we're right around 200 are signed up for the emails, with about 180 signed up for the smartphones or the text messages. I really believe Nixel Engage will get us to that next level, because it offers so much more technology, the alerts, and when, when that happens and that transition happens, I'm planning on making a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce. Once we get this Nixel Engage, and when they see the benefits of it, I'm sure you're gonna have a lot of people sign up for it, because now we can do groups. We, we can't do groups right now. When we send a message, it's all or nobody. With the Nixel Engage, we can have as many different groups as we want, and that's a big benefit there.
Okay, thank you, chief. Also, on my report, I'd like to make a statement on the Fourth of July. Basically, as well, the Fourth of July Commission has received a 2014 Camaro, and notified this evening that probably tomorrow we will have tickets available for sale. We've been questioned by several people, wondering where are the tickets, and where can we get them, and we got a call tonight, and will probably happen tomorrow, so just to bring you up to date on that. Any questions of the chief or myself? Scott, that completes my report.
Public Works Committee, just a quick...
Water Department and Sewer Department, public reports are in full review. Public Works Annual Report, Buddy, wanna hit some hot spots?
Oh, I'm ready to get shot at. Well, the first thing I can say is, you know, I threw in pictures this year of the Public Works Department, you know, they're in black and white, and I had the opportunity to put in color, but I thought it was real important that you could actually identify the faces with the people that are employed by the village and the Public Works Department. I mean, two of the guys look alike, that's Jim and Steven, so good luck with that one. The Water Department, I'll zoom through this. The one thing that comes out most to me this year is two, two different things, and I don't know if you realize it, but we had 33 water main breaks this last winter, most of it, I mean, for the year of 2013, most of them dawned in the fall and the wintertime due to the freezing and thawing of the ground, which leads us to why the town looks like Germany right now, and we are working very hard to do all these restorations. We've already gone through six truckloads of dirt, so you're gonna have to, hopefully, you'll, you know, and all, work with us and, and be patient. We have a hard time getting the dirt right now, because of the fact, every time it rains, you know, it, it puts us back a couple days with getting it. We've done a lot of tree restoration, it, it's all a work in progress, plus we have a couple other side jobs that we're doing, like you see on Penfield, I have that ditch that's cut out, that's one of the first things we'll be attacking here in the next two weeks, so we'll get that eyesore out of the way. You can see also that we, we spent a lot of money on stone this last year, you can attribute that to the main breaks. A couple of other projects that we had that we are finishing up, the Elm Street Water Main, that's been up and online and, and ready to roll for a long time, we just have to go back in there and do the restorations on that. I'll go ahead and touch base with Prairie, that water main is, is, job is completed right now. It's been up and online for over a week. Now, we have to go back in there and do some restoration, I mean, we, we hit a couple niches, believe it or not, every time you dug into the ground, we were hitting sanitary lines, service lines that they had there were ridiculous, I, you know, Carol, her, her line, believe it or not, it had poly lining in it, and we had a hard time tracing it even back to the house. So, they all have new service lines right now, and they have been running for over a week. The salt, we will be addressing that this year, you're gonna see that we're gonna be purchasing more because of the fact we did burn through just about everything we had. We had enough left at the end of the year, probably for four, at least four complete saltings of the town, but, I mean, we, we've been stockpiling our salt for probably about three or four years, and we're, you know, gonna end up having to do that, I'm not sure what the dollar amount is that we're gonna spend, but we're gonna get as much...
Seventy-eight thousand.
Seventy-eight thousand, so I do want you to know too, that, you know, with the 33 water main breaks that we had, if we were to farm that out, you can figure right around $4,000 per break. So, by doing this in town, I mean, we, it averaged out to be probably right around $132,000 worth of water main breaks, you know, so I wanna, you know, commend my department, or the village's department, that these guys went above and beyond between snow plowing and everything, and the time that we invested, it was pretty tedious. That's about all I have for my report, if there's any questions.
Prairie, connection those, it's, we made the tie, and it's tied off to the, to the properties?
Yes, everything's done, everything's tied in, you have two valves were installed, you know, we have the ability to shut down. Actually, it works out better, if there's a problem on Pasadena, if there's a problem on Melrose, I can cut up the two blocks in half and feed from one direction or the other now. So, the looping was a smart thing to do.
All you have left is restoration.
Yeah, and that's, I'm, weather permitting, I, I'm going to try to expedite that this week.
Trying to get a handle, I know we spent a lot of time, you're talking about the beer program, and Buddy, you know, the $10,000, and Buddy thinks it'd be cut from the meter program and all that. I'm trying to get a handle. Last year, we put in 46 new meters.
And that's correct, and we spent...
And we budgeted $10,000, and it was costing us $460 per installation.
But, that $10,000 of meters, like you said, 46, I can explain to you, we spent that money, but the, the cost of a one-inch meter versus a, you know, you're almost paying, paying $2,000 for a two-inch or an inch and a half.
And you put some of those in last year.
Yes, we did, we put three of them in, and it took the big chunk out of it, which lowered it, why we weren't able to do that. Now, this village board here, I wanna say about six years, no, maybe not even six years ago, we made a commitment to go through the, the meter upgrading of the system, and that's why that $10,000 was there. Now, you have to realize that when I started here 16 years ago, I wanna say three years prior to that, they bought the SR2 meters, which were the old highheads, and they were rebuilt. Now, AWWA standards has these meters, their only accuracy are guaranteed for like 15 years. You far exceeded that, so I think that's probably one of the biggest reasons we have a water loss ratio to pumped.
Do you use the HERSI meters in the system?
Pardon that? Yes, I do, we, we still have a couple of those in the meter, I mean, in the system. When we started this, we had, one of the biggest things we had was, we had Badger meters, HERSI meters, census meters, and slumberges, I mean, you had three of those. The idea was that we would be one meter, keep the parts on, on the shelf, and, you know, one meter, one supplier, and be responsible that, that direction, and the smartest thing to do, reading-wise, for the meters, for the residents, and for this village. And where we're at right now, they've gone as far, you know, like you said, the new meters that they have out there, it's all inductive picket, there is no moving parts in it, so we don't have to worry about them slowing down, you know, and we've been implementing this for probably the last year and a half to two years. The meter program, I wanna say there's probably about 600 meters out there left to be changed.
You had your report by meter pits replaced one. How many meter pits do we have left?
Bob, there's, there's three that I own of, but you never really can tell, I mean, I mean, we can be digging out there, and lo and behold, it'll pop up. What they did, before I was here, I mean, alls they did was like bury the evidence. They would disconnect it from out in the street, and they'd put a piece of pipe into it, and then they'd bury it.
So, the pit's still there but the years now?
Right, exactly. And a lot of times, there's, there's a valve in there, and the way we find it is, you know, the water will protrude from it, it'll rot out, and then, well, okay, so we just cut it out and reconnect it.
Thank you, Buddy.
Thank you.
And also, kinda unplugged with the water meter replacement, Buddy, me and Brian have been in contact. We understand that, you know, there were some cuts in the budget, we are figuring out ways to do, still, still accomplish with less, you know what I'm saying? We will still get some stuff done, we're looking at different ways of, you know, randomly picking some, looking at trends to identify this, rather than just going at it little and nearly, and just going and replacing every meter. So, we will be getting in touch with you, you know, as time progresses, but this is something that, you know, me and Brian, as a committee, are diligently working on, so... All right, the Alph turning report, we finally received that from Simpson. You wanna give us an update on that? I mean, I went through it all, there's an ICD like we've been promised, and there's a, a two binder report.
And the, the other thing is too, that I, I gave, I think, I'm not sure if I gave it to you, but I gave Bob my password to it. You have the ability, even if your, your, these books burnt down in the building and everything was lost, these are GPS, they're DIS, which is one of the reasons that it took a little bit longer, you know, to get the report out, plus they, it's online. I mean, you have the ability right now to go to ME Simpson, to their website, pull up the Village of Beecher, punch in the password, and you can see every valve, anything from your, from your computer and/or smartphone, which is a very, you know, promising. I mean, as far as the valves being replaced, yeah, there, there's a few of them that we knew were, are, were the nuts are rounded off and they're harder to operate, and the other good thing is that because we have the ability to talk to Simpson online and communicate, every time we put a new valve in or replace one, we can go in there and upload the information, and that's just less work that they can have to do for us, and it saves us money in the end.
Well, there's also some advantages to this also.
Oh, yes.
We get these new maps and stuff that the guys all have, especially in the water truck. If you're getting...
I have them today, they're, they're in the trucks.
All right, so now, we can take that, and we can take valves that we know are no good, and we can save time in the field if, if you do have water main break, because we can mark those on those maps, so the guys know not even to go to attempt to try to work on that valve, you hop right over and get to the next one where you can get on it. It's, it's a, it was a positive thing, I think, the Alph turn.
Oh, it is, it's a very positive thing.
All right, Prairie Avenue Water Main Project update, as Buddy just stated, everything's up and running, we're just gonna be waiting on the restoration.
Which I will diligently expedite.
And Elm Street Water Main Replacement, Restoration Update, same thing, you know, we all understand and know where that is. Miller Street Forest Main Televising Update, I know we had a, a meeting set up for these guys, and we, they were scheduled to come out, I think it was not last Tuesday, but the Tuesday before, they canceled on us, because I was gonna do a...
They've, they've canceled on me three times, so...
So, hopefully, we can get that done, if not, it's time to start. I understand it's a very specialized thing, and there's not many of them out there, but they're gonna find time for us, or we're gonna find somebody else who will.
That's correct.
Consider a motion authorize the installation of variable drives in the booster station by Austin Electric in the amount of $16,593. $17,500 was budgeted for this project, there still needs to be some changes in the SCADA system to accommodate these drives. You know, we've, we've been discussing this for a while now, we want these in, ready to roll, so get them done before the summer hits. So, I will make a motion authorizing the installation of variable drives in the booster station by Austin Electric, in the amount of $16,593.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, and there was a second, any questions or discussion?
Buddy, is, is Austin gonna be buying the, the FDS and doing the installation?
Yes.
So, this will be all in Austin?
Yes, that's what you guys...
Other than what we need to do with...
Yeah, with, with, yeah, and they're, they're onboard with that.
Are these ADV drives?
Yes, yes.
So, all are driving the same?
Yes, same manufacturer.
Same manufacturer, it's not the same size?
Different size, that's correct.
Depending on the horsepower, it's gonna change your drive that.
Any other question?
Waylon?
Yes.
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 Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Larry?
Consider a motion authorizing the acceptance of a bid for completion of thermoplastic paint striping of all village streets in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars and seven cents to Superior Road striping of Melrose. This bid process was handled by the suburban purchasing co-op. Everything was done off of per foot. Bob used some stuff that we had had, that we had always used from when we would have everything painted. So we had our, our lengths and the widths of these bars and everything else on the roads. So Bob was, with a lot of work, able to get this pinpointed down, and we were able to get a price back from them. This is something that has been discussed for a few years now. It's something we've wanted to do. And I think in the long haul, this ends up saving us money by doing it and, and getting a nicer product that's gonna last longer, rather than constantly having to repaint those streets every year. So I will make a motion authorizing the acceptance of a bid for the completion of thermoplastic paint striping of all village streets in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars and seven cents to Superior Road striping of Melrose Park.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, and there was a second. Questions or discussion?
I guess one, one point one to make, and John, you kinda glanced over it, but it costs us ten thousand a year to do the similar thing, and we have to do it every year. So if you figure that this stuff is gonna last for five years, that's fifty thousand dollars we'd spend, as opposed to under twenty thousand.
And this is five to seven, and, you know, on, on our less busy streets, we're not, we should get a lot more than the five to seven. You know, some of our busier streets might be at that five-year range, but-
Regular striping's gonna last a year.
Yeah.
Just the pain of bidding it out every year.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good one.
Is there any other questions to come? Call.
Claire?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
Road conditions after a harsh winter. You know, I, me and Buddy did it together. I went out and did it. Especially took a big look at a lot of our new streets that were just done last year. This was a hard winter. It was, there's no doubt about it. We need to get on board with the crack sealing. We have twenty thousand budgeted, and we will be doing that this fall, so. That's just kind of an update on that. Updates on repairs, the lift stations in the sewer plant. Recent preventive maintenance has uncovered some need for repairs at the sewer plant and the Cardinal Creek Lift Station. At Cardinal Creek, both pumps have to be rebuilt due to the acidity of the water being stagnant in the wet well. The engineers are working on a solution to this problem, which we will discuss further next month. And the second issue is RAS Lifted Station at the sewer plant, which is still acting up and need repairs. This is our grit removal, and the rebuild of Clarifier Two is planned, and work is being scheduled now. And that concludes my report.
Thanks. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sorry.
Uh, road conditions after a harsh winter. We do this crack sealing, and I look across the street, and we've got these big gaping cracks in winter. There's some type of material that isn't a little expansive, or as far as I'm concerned, in winter, the salt goes boom right in.
Yeah, and it's not even so much the salt that's the concern, it's the water. You got that water getting in between your lifts and your base. That's your-
You've still got those big gaping cracks.
Well, it, it has been, what, three years, I think. This will be year three since we've, the past two winters, we have not done crack sealing. And the last time that we did do it, it was all done pretty much in, in hunter's chase on, on newer roads. You know, right now, I think our number one priority is gonna be to protect and preserve the roads that we just spent a lot of money on last year. And I, I think priority number two, I agree with you, has to be getting back to those streets that haven't been done in probably five, six years, and we're looking at those. The crack sealing is supposed to be elastic, and, and with that, and I just think with older roads, and it's just been the number of years that it's been, and since we've done it, it is definitely time to pay attention to some of those roads and, and possibly get back in there and re-treat them, so.
There have been no improvements made in material or something, expansive wire or something?
Not that I've ever heard of. I mean, that is something maybe we can ask, was Tara from Baxter and Woodland.
We, we went to a lot of seminars, Ron, to look at, they have cement sealed now. None went up to-
Toyota Bar?
Yeah. We, we've battled with slippery seal, we've battled with seal coating, we've battled with crack sealing, and none of them is the ideal solution. When you get a winter, and it goes to twenty below, and then it goes to fifty degrees, that, that road just splits. And the worst time is when it's thawing, you see these big gaps. In the summertime, those gaps do close, those cracks do close.
And the winter is when we need it.
There's nothing, there's nothing on the market that can prevent a three-inch crack from opening in that road.
When's the last time we spent twenty thousand on this?
It was three years ago. We haven't done it the past two years. So it was, it had to have been the winter of, the fall of two thousand eleven going into twelve.
You'd think there'd be-
And at that time, like I said, the number one priority was, everything was done. It was in Hunter's Chase West, a little bit of Hunter's Chase, and like Hunter's Chase East, it was concentrating on newer roads that had their final lift done within the last five years.
You take Hodges Street-
That had never been done before.
Hodges Street from Gould to Old Park. That road was paved last summer. Go look at it. It's, it's cracked, and it was from a hard winter. We have to crack seal that road to save it.
Yeah, that, like I said, that's our number one priority, is we have to protect our investment that we just made last year. And then we have to get back in there and look at some of these areas that haven't been done in years, so.
Look at Melrose and Prairie. A whole lot of those streets.
It's gotta be seven years, Bob, or six, isn't it?
Yeah, Prairie's never been done, I don't think.
No, but Melrose was done like six years ago. And, yeah, Ron, I agree, you know, there are some stress fractures and where you're at, and, and I'll tell you this, this year was brutal. And the minute it got in there and it freeze, go back, it just keep making it worse and worse and worse. You got some over here on Cardinal Creek, you got a four-inch gap. That's why I said at the budget meeting, we're gonna have a lot of roads that we're gonna have to take care of this year. And some of them, Ron, I think they might be so far gapped out that don't, there's, you're not gonna be able to crack seal them. We're gonna have to go in there and saw cut them, and literally throw in maybe a, a three-inch line of the width of the road. I mean, it's, and, and then, you know, hot patch it and roll it. 'Cause that's the only answer, you put the butt joint in there. Don't you agree, Bob? That's the only thing you can do.
Yeah, they have not come up with a surface yet to handle what you want.
It, it appears to me, from looking at several streets, the, the cracks that go across the roads are the ones that gap.
Across the crown, yes.
Cracks that go west of the road.
Yes. A lot of it has to do with the design, that, you know, some of the roads aren't crowned, some are flat, and then they dip. And once they hit that crack, I mean, it, it's just crumbling. And we're not the only one.
Depends on the crown. You know what we say about crown? The crown is the highest to run to the, the curves and off to the side of the road. And, you know, it all depends on that crown, and once you start going at the top of that crown, it's tough, but.
Fairway Drive is really bad.
I'm with Ron, wondering the same thing about the material that you use. Is there anything that would be, as opposed to Superior's gonna save five years of work that you did ten thousand dollars a year on right now? Is there any difference in the material that you're using for these road repairs? Is there anything that you can get that's better to do it?
It's, it's-
Yeah, you'd expect there'd be improvement.
It's blacktop, it's petunias, it's, it's what it is. That's all you can get out of blacktop. The problem you're gonna have is freezing and thawing is what makes it change. And unless you can change the physical structure of what happens from freezing and thawing of, of, of an item, you're never gonna change it. It's gonna be something, when you, if you had concrete roads, you'd have worse. Because those separations, there's, uh, blacktop is the most flexible of all the road surfaces you can have. And it's all based on its base. If the base is good, and as long as you take care of that, that top coat, the base will be there. But if, if, if the top coat starts to fail, and that water gets further down, and it gets to the base, that freezing and thawing will snap that apart, and the entire base of the road will fail. And once you have road base failure, then it just starts to just pop it all the way down the road.
That was basically what my question about the cement too, like when you replace it like that. There's really nothing you're gonna do to get it to be anything better than just time. It's gonna, it's gonna crack and-
It, it will, for, for, for a, we're, we're kinda comparing, you know, road surface with, with concrete in a, for a garage, but you can't, you can't, you can eliminate the movement of a concrete slab by not having as a slab, you have foundation walls going down, getting it below frost. The roads don't have that, and our roads really don't have the best base to begin with, other than the newer roads. 'Cause the original roads were based on stone and chip. And they were built on and built on and built on, and then they were blacktopped over the top. So their bases are horrible. So when you get the freezing and thawing, it's gonna, it's gonna buckle. So the most flexible road surface you can get is blacktop.
That's my question. It's-
And it's, it's just, with where we're at, it's what we have to deal.
And I got one last thing that I wanna add, and this is, and it's just a reminder for the entire board, that when we came about and we did this road study program two years ago, there was many different options. One of the options that we looked at was going for loan and doing, redoing all these roads at once. And the board, we, we chose to take a conservative approach, not to borrow, spend as we go, as we have the money. And these are some of the things that we have to deal with by taking that approach to it. You have the, setting the priorities of protecting the new roads as you just do it, still taking care of the old roads, taking care of new subdivisions that have now grown and are now ten, twelve years mature, seven subdivisions that are seven, eight years mature. These are all things that, when, you know, we made the decisions we made two years ago, to do this and to take this approach side by, you know, as we go, and, you know, doing what we can every couple of years, and now having to factor in crack sealing in, in those in-between years. This was a decision we made, and it's gonna be a difficult one. You know, I can assure everyone that, you know, me and Brian are gonna be looking at this, and we'll, we'll set the priorities, and we'll do the best we can with the funds that we have available. So, that concludes my report.
To the number one. Repair service station. Economic development committee relations suite.
Bernard, well, the Super Connection update, we met with Bernard officials about three weeks ago, and a memorandum, memorandum of understanding that was reached. The enclosed draft was presented to Bernard's by the village, and it outlines a plan for installing a lift station in Forest Main. This is still being negotiated, and the property owners along the route are willing to allow them to survey, but they are not interested in annexation at this point. The village will have sewn out the Corning though, and an annexation agreement would be required before anyone could use the sewer. Bernard's would sign a pre-annexation agreement for such time when they become contiguous. And that's about all that's new with that project at the moment. Smartphone application, we turned it into Google and Apple last Monday, a week ago today. They're hoping within the next two to three weeks, maybe, it'll become available, not for the public at first. Several of us will be able to download it and basically play with it, try to break it, make sure the links work, make sure there's no typos. And it would go back for any updates that need to be done, and then it would be ready to launch.
And you'll send us an email when we start some-
Absolutely. And like I says, probably get six, eight, ten of us maybe to take a look at it and, you know, see if anybody can find things that are wrong with it. They can still go back and tweak it and do some things before the, the whole public sees it. But it went ahead of schedule. We did pretty well with it. We worked on it very diligently. The spring newsletter was mailed last week. The intergovernmental meeting scheduled for Thursday, May twenty-ninth, is, it's the same agenda that we had for the January meeting that was canceled due to the blizzard. So a discussion of tips is on the agenda. The next item, considering incentive package for new home construction in the village. The committee met to consider a request from a purchaser of Prairie Crossing South Garden Home Lots, and made a recommendation to the village board, which is contained in the enclosed report. We spent a bit of time with this. They came to the village to talk about some kind of incentives, not to the builder or to the developer necessarily, but to actual buyers, to residents that would come in and, and buy property. The incentive we talked about was twenty-five hundred dollars to the new owner of any new home construction, not necessarily just for this specific builder. And it would come from Water and Sewer Capital Fund upon proof of closing of a new home. We would cap it at a hundred units total, or, or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The enclosed report discusses it, and if we agree to it, we can have the attorney draft an ordinance. And Bob, did you wanna give any updates on it, or?
No, I think it's something we should try.
It's not something that we would actually be spending. It's, it's things that were coming in from our, um-
I, I sent an article, even bragging about what Wilmington did. Wilmington's weaving all their fees, on the first hundred units, I believe. And we're not weaving all, we're just giving them twenty-five hundred dollars.
So this was basically just a little less money that the village would get. We were not impacting parks. And, since there, since there wasn't much to work with. And we talked about not discussing anything with the school district, since we didn't think that would go too far anyway. So this is just money that would come out of, you know, our fees. It's money that we wouldn't get, rather than money we have to come up with to spend.
How are you gonna make sure that the owner, the buyer gets that money? Because that is gonna go to the builder, correct, as far as fees?
The buyer's gonna come in with his certificate of closing, and make the checkup.
So after closing, they would come in. So it's not something that the builder, the developer-
They can advertise it as an incentive, but only the buyer benefits, not the builder.
And it's not something that they can use that closing against home stores as, as far as any sort of equity?
Yeah, it would be after.
And we'll push in the blow on it.
Landscape, you know?
Water fee, they gotta pay for that.
I have a question.
It's not, it would already be a new year, right?
Yeah, but they have to pay it then.
My question, first off, would be, what do you do with subdivisions if these houses are built and closed where we've already collected them? We, we talk about money that we wouldn't be collecting, well, there is subdivisions where we've, we're sitting on those already, correct?
No, this would be, if the builder wants to build a home after the next meeting, 'cause you have to pass an ordinance.
Okay.
That would, that would be in play. There would be no existing permits where this would come into play unless you wanna include them.
No, my question is, is in the future, if somebody MGM, correct, we've collected some tap-in fees already?
Yep.
Okay, so we're talking about money that, you know, is, is anybody else following me here?
I, I'm not getting this, these have already been collected.
They're not, they're not held, aren't dispossessed. Those houses were already sold.
What about all the waivers that we have out there?
That's what I'm asking. That's exactly what I'm asking is, what, what if somebody buys a lot and the house is built there?
We talked about that.
We talked about that, the waivers would not yet.
Like an MGM, not Alki Mount family.
So those wouldn't qualify, but these others would?
Yeah, but those waivers are already paid.
Right.
There's those-
And that, I think, was in the report, that those would not be-
We can't fork out twenty-five hundred dollars we don't have.
Well, my next question is, would that be considered favoritism, or it could be, not favoritism, but it could be construed as though we're trying to push somebody to develop into one area over another? If it's offered here, 'cause believe me, I'm for it. I think we gotta, we gotta do something, do incentivize.
I think the difference, I think the difference, John, is, the, the incentive that they're talking about is twenty-five hundred dollars that the village receives from the builder. All we're doing is refunding that back to the homeowner. Now, hang on. Where at, at MGM, there is no, there's waivers there, so there's zero fee for, for that tap-in. The, the, the homeowner is not paying that tap-in fee. So all we're doing is, if a tap-in fee is paid, where we, we are reimbursing the homeowner, so they pay no tap-in fee. As MGM is right now, there is no tap-in fee in MGM, 'cause they have waivers.
So you can't reimburse something that they're not paying.
Besides, besides, I don't, I don't, I don't look at it that way. Bottom line is, we're trying to spark growth within the village, and I don't think anybody disagrees with that. That deal's already been cut and had, just like any other new subdivision that would come in, we would make a deal with that subdivision, and it could be different from any other deal we had because of what's before us. If we would have only made this, and that's the, the request actually came in only for this unit. But then when we sat down and we talked, we said, no, for the whole town, wherever we can apply it, we would apply it for the whole town, but we put a limit on it. Now, if we were to do it only for this development, I think you have a very good point. But everything else that we're doing, I think that deal's already been cut and made, and there's nothing we can do about it. But then you're incentivizing, I, I understand what you're saying very, but at the same time, you're, whereas, there's only one subdivision when we have waivers, correct?
No. There, there was some prepaid two weeks, I don't even worry about it, but there were some of them bought fifteen years ago. And they're sitting there, say, pots of pot somewhere. I don't know where they're at. They were bought by residents. Yeah, residents bought them, they're vacant lots and land subdivision.
So technically, with these subdivisions that have the waivers, they should transfer that savings to the buyer, technically.
That's correct.
That's correct. That was what we talked about in committee. They, they, they got these waivers for providing us in-time donations of land and oversized lift stations and oversized pipes. They didn't give us cash for those waivers.
So in a roundabout way, they did receive that twenty-five hundred dollars, just differently than what we're proposing now.
And they should give that savings to the buyer. And they should give that savings to the buyer.
In theory, just like if we raised a, or raised a fear or something, that they're just gonna pass it on to the buyer, so that should've happened to that, but we don't know what they're there to do.
So what do you do with the ones that haven't bought the residential lots but haven't built, that have already paid?
I don't know how many there is left. There might only be two or three left, I don't know. Do we have an exact count of how many those outside of MGM that may exist?
I might have some in an old file somewhere.
Yeah, it was fifteen years ago when we offered that. I'm pretty sure there's probably a couple floating around there. I bet your Nelson's got one.
I know of three, they at least three.
You know of three? I, I, ah, well, I don't know. You can't, you can't give out money you didn't collect, you know?
I, I understand. And at the same time, I love the idea, I think it's a fantastic idea. And I just don't want it to appear as though we're trying to steer a potential homeowner away from one area or subdivision and towards another area or subdivision because they can get a twenty-five hundred dollar check from the village after they close versus not getting it if they move here. And I understand that that savings should be there in the cost of the home, but is the difference of physically, tangibly having a twenty-five hundred dollar check in your hand or not?
And advertising it to that effect.
I think.
Okay, I, I have a question now. Let's say we didn't do this, and we just decided that we truly drop all of our fees by twenty-five hundred dollars. Is that steering? I'm just asking because those permits were issued with a certain fee.
I, I really like this idea, I think that's, I think it's a definite positive, I think it'll hit home to a home buyer. And, and, you know, that, that actual being able to walk in after you close and go and sign up for your garbage service and your water service and, you know, basically, you know, fill out a form, and the village is mailing you a check for twenty-five hundred dollars, you know, in a couple of days, I think it's, I think it's a fantastic idea. I just want to make sure, you know, by no means am I, I guess, as I'm definitely for this. I think it's a positive thing, but I think we've just gotta be careful, and yeah, I think. May I make a suggestion? We kick it back to committee, and if any of you have any other ideas you for them, the committee chairman, who would instead reconsider?
I think the attorney should review the proposal. We could approve the concept, I mean, we would review. I don't think Johnson's opposed to it, he just wanna make sure that we don't get.
He raised, he raised the point, and it sounds like the supporters agreed to the point. So rather than, again, we're not gonna resolve it tonight, let's kick it back to committee. Can you, can you do, review it? Come up with some other ideas if you have any for them, the committee chairman. In the meantime, whatever we come up with can be reviewed by the, so in other words, we would table this then.
Sounds good. Um, Comcast annual Beecher cable TV report is enclosed for your review and consideration. Twenty-nine complaints received last year from Beecher customers.
Only?
Customers. ComEd sent a letter to the village explaining the proposed rate increase. Please see the enclosed letter with the attached explanation of the new rate structure being requested from the ICC. Uh, this is for transmission of power to the customer and not the supplier of the energy. So is this only going to the ComEd customer as opposed to the First Energy? Is this going to everybody? It's like three blocks or something?
First of all, this, this has nothing to do with who provides your power. This only has to do with how your power gets to your house. So if it's First Energy, uh, NIPSCO, CommAllThetison, whoever produces your power is independent. This has to do with CommAllThetison's transmission fees, that's all it's all about.
Now, being we're on ComEd, uh, does it seem like we've been losing power more often recently?
Yeah, that one evening and day, we had what, four power failures? And I believe the information I received, there was equipment failures somewhere.
This morning was the same, I mean, we didn't lose it totally.
Well, with the high winds, there were, I have to admit, there were winds that I didn't think were that bad, but it actually blew bricks off, uh, you know, my deck and that with a, a table. And it's, it's been there all year, where along, but all of a sudden, we had a problem, plus we had two poles.
As I say, they were, they were perfect. Well, along Route One, the road was closed Sunday, just north of Indiana Avenue.
Yeah, with their lines down?
There were lines down. I mean, it's, that wind does a lot of damage.
I know, but it seems like it's been more consistent. I was just wondering if they were doing work or updating equipment or whatever.
Um, and that is the end of my report.
Lilian Expressway, uh, that report was actually given better than I could, uh, the Abs, Tomlin, Bosman? Oh, Tomlin Bosman, Tomlin Bosman. But in any event, uh, South suburban airport, we did, uh, this community that's had surrounded the South suburban airport did meet with Secretary Ann Schneider and an entourage of attorneys, uh, to discuss the Senate Bill Twenty that was passed and the, uh, who's gonna run the airport and how it's gonna be run. Uh, we addressed some of our concerns as far as the verbiage that was in that, uh, which, uh, they took back, and they were, uh, are supposed to consult with us at a later date. Some of the things they did explain, and why they did what they did, made it more attractive to a, uh, a B-three partnership to some of the main remain down the road, uh, and there's just a further discussion to be had. Will County Governmental League, Bob and I traveled to Springfield, uh, one day. Uh, we did meet with, uh, Senator Cullerton and other senators. And some of the hot topics on that particular day was, uh, there's been a lot of press release lately on the firefighters, on the, uh, mandatory manning, or the minimum staffing standards. And also there was another bill being sponsored about the consolidation of the municipality or, or the trustees of a fire district decided they wanna consolidate districts, uh, to cut down on funds because of no funds available, so on and so forth, that they were trying to have restrictions, and it had to go through certain steps before you could do that. Uh, those items are still hot topics as of today. Uh, local governmental distributive fund was also spoke about, uh, discussed. Uh, we've been sort of assured that, that probably will be there in the future. In fact, there was a news report this evening on what the governor is planning for the future as far as those funds, uh, helping to fund pensions, not helping to fund pensions, and so on and so forth, but again, it's still a hot topic. We did have the highlight of our day, uh, we met the governor, Bob and I. Uh, we personally met him, I never have, so we had an opportunity to meet with him and talk with him a little bit. Uh, and actually, it was one of the better, uh, lobby days that we've had down in Springfield. We have another one, uh, coming up, which is this Wednesday, going down with the, uh, Illinois Municipal League and the South suburban mayors and managers. Uh, and we also have a meeting with the, with the governor again, to discuss some of these topics that we're on. The South suburban mayors and managers does have a dinner meeting, uh, May fifteenth, at Scrimmety's, and since it's close by, I'd like to open up to the board, and if you'd like to go, please let Bob know. Uh, and then we'll make the reservations, we do have a credit there, uh, for two.
Individuals, Bob.
For two individuals, so, and the entire board would like to go, that's fine. If we at least get two of you, we'll read up our credit before they start making interest on it.
Since this is close, there are several communities where a lot of trustees go, from the South suburbs. And if you're just curious to see what the South suburban mayors and managers are involved with, here it's close, you're not traveling all the way up to New Lightwood, like we have before.
After our last meeting, Bob and I discussed it, we'd like to say we'd like to open the invitation all of them. And if you do, let Bob know. East County Board meeting, I sort of definitely knew there, we're updating equipment, now consolidation, bringing in South Chicago Heights and Stager. And that was it, right? South Heights and Stager, uh, did in fact occur, and they are up and running as of this date. Uh, Route One, three ninety-four update, Bob will let you do that.
Yeah, we're gonna have our kickoff meeting here, uh, next week. We have hired a consultant, the consultant has begun his work, and they're coming in for interviews with me Thursday, the line-one interviews, and then the whole board meets next week, Tuesday. So that project is, is well on its way, and we expect to see a, a draft and a plan for public hearing in the fall.
Uh, there's one item I'd like to ask, just before we get to the last one. Uh, Paul Omen had traveled to Germany, uh, last year, and he met quite a few people, made friends out of Germany. Some of those, uh, individuals came and visited us in Beecher and the Creed Valley area. Uh, those were Christian Gabriel Frick, Willie and Sophie Menchon, and Wilhelm Schroeder, and the granddaughter of Finja Kein. Uh, Paul took a lot of tour of Beecher, uh, Creed area, and they visited other areas throughout the Chicago, Cook County, and so on and so forth. Uh, one of the things I think we should be proud of is, we gave them, or Paul gave them, our Quai, Quasid?
Quasid.
That too, our books. Uh, we gave them books to take back to Germany, and along with that, we gave them, we have those little little pail pins with the Briscoe emblem, uh, we gave them that to take back to Germany, so our piece of Beecher went back to Berke, uh, Germany. Uh, but I'd like to say welcome, thank you for visiting us, and we hope you all come back soon. And my last item is, after the last village board meeting, where we passed a motion canceling the meetings in June, July, and August, the first meeting of the month, and moving everything to the second meeting. Even after we thought we reached a consensus that night, the very week, the very next day, there was still a considerable amount of discussion that had taken place, where some of the trustees, uh, still had a concern about what we did and how we did it. Some of them did not speak up that night, uh, they wanted to try it, some of them, uh, thought they could make a six-thirty meeting, uh, the first meeting of the month, and that has become hard. Uh, to make the long story short, I would ask that we reconsider what we did. And I'm asking basically that we reinstate our June, July, and August meeting. What I'd suggest that we do, we pay our bills at the first meeting a month. We would have a short agenda like we demonstrated, uh, approximately two weeks ago. That may have put approximately fifteen, twenty minutes, we would pay our bills. Uh, we'd have the commission reports and do anything else that we could to speed up this meeting or the second meeting in a month, which we are on a roll tonight as well. Uh, and basically, the conversation after I had with all trustees, we all admit that at some point in time, we feel that we are gonna go back to two meetings a month. And since those two meetings a month are not gonna differ from what we currently have now, because no, we had no other days we could agree, we're going through a lot of work to change something that we really don't need to change. But if we can shorten the agenda, the first meeting a month, push everything to the second meeting of the month, that way then, the concerns that we've had about trying to make up, even though we always feel that we are very successful to the public, we would even more accessible by moving all the agenda items to the second meeting a month, like we did tonight, and then we would move on from there, hoping for discussion. And that's what that memo was, that I, it seemed to be a little confusing. I understood it entirely. You know, but I understand there was some concern, uh, that basically, we're asking to reconsider that motion, or probably reconsider what we've done, simply make a new motion reinstating those meetings in June, July, and August, because we have not changed the ordinance whatsoever as of yet. So on the books, we are still supposed to meet the second and fourth Monday of the month at seven o'clock, and all we did was cancel those three meetings. So I'm asking if you would consider to reinstate them. First meeting would be short agenda like we demonstrated, pay the bills. And then the second meeting would be to have our full agenda.
Well, and I'll talk, I went in that week, probably not the next day, cause that's my long day. I went in on Wednesday, probably on my day off. And it seemed like what was not communicated that night was going into village hall and seeing staff kind of crazily trying to make it work, changing the bill payments to the last meeting of the month. And that's when I said, why are we going through this if we're all available for the Monday nights anyway? Why don't you just keep it the way we had it, which I think I brought up that night too, but there were just other things on the table, and we never talked about it. Keep exactly what you said, do this, the second Monday of the month for the short agenda, and then push the rest of the stuff to the second. That way, the guys can still go to the school board meeting if they like, or women, whoever wants to go to the school board meeting. Um, the public can still see us, but we don't have to put staff through that kind of craziness trying to change the whole way they pay bills just to kind of accommodate a meeting change. It seemed like it would make more sense of that, and they were perfectly willing to do it. It's just, it seemed like there was an awful lot of bandwidth being wasted, trying to figure out how to change something that didn't necessarily have to be changed, and we could still accommodate everybody by doing it this way. But that's when I went in, was talking to him about it that Wednesday, if that was clear, or do I still have to remember?
I understood it entirely. I mean, Kim, Kim is in the audience, Kim even chimed in. The next day it was on Wednesday as well. He even chimed in, and, and I had asked him, some of this discussion that took place after, I said, why wasn't this brought out in the meeting? I thought it was. And like Marcy said, apparently it wasn't made clear to at least three of the trustees that, you know, came to me afterwards. Um, so.
Yeah, to me, that night of the meeting, it didn't seem like it would be that difficult. Okay, you don't have to bill, yeah, sure, why not? That's why they wouldn't have started seeing that.
Right, I think staff too wanted to make it work, you know? And I think that was the impression that we got, was, you know, we're gonna, we'll make it work, no matter what. But when you really get down to it, you know, you're talking a lot of work to make that happen.
Correct. And like I said, if we're talking about going back to two meetings anyways, which by ordinance we're supposed to have, and we all agreed that it may, it's probably gonna happen anyways, we're gonna go to a lot of work for nothing, which doesn't have to change. Anybody else? Ryan? Yeah?
No.
Marcy, anything else?
I think I said my piece.
Brad? Scott? Start a motion?
So what do we have to move?
Make it easy, just, I would say, make a motion to reinstate the June, July, and August meetings. And then we'll take care of the agenda, I don't think, it has, it has, it can be part of the motion. But staff, basically, would do it internally, we'd keep the short agenda on the second meeting a month.
All right, I make a motion to reinstate the.
June, July, and August.
June, July, and August meetings, second meetings of the month.
There's a motion number four, is there a second?
Second.
And there was a second.
Here's a question, I'm quite fine. These meetings are at seven o'clock, not six thirty?
Yes. In fact, we, this was the, this.
The May one is six thirty, yeah?
That motion stands. We're not asking to change that motion.
So it started in June, they both.
June, July, and August, we go back to normal. The, uh, May one stand, we're not asking, we're not discussing it.
I have a question, why are you saying for June, July, and August if you're looking to change the meetings?
That was the only motion that was made last month to cancel the June, July, and August. Very after everything's back to normal, we haven't changed the ordinance. Okay, there's a motion, there was a second. Any questions or further discussion? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Omen?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes. Thank you. And that will be the end of my report. Okay, motion.
Motion to adjourn.
And number seven?
Second.
Just under discuss, we can't discuss a motion to adjourn, but I just wanna say, we need a picture of the village board with Marcy and the village, and you guys have full warrants, you can trust for that picture.
Book for all the day, I mentioned. All right, roll call.
Barry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer? Brooks?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.